Time to get this thing rolling. I'll call this meeting to order. And the first thing we have on our agenda as usual is pledge allegiance and then a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tim, if you would help us out here.
Before I pray, I want to share something with you, hopefully to encourage you. Because God is both infinite and sovereign, he sees each one of us as if we're the only one. And you can be confident that this world isn't spinning out of his control. He's got it. There's plenty of bad news, we know that, but God isn't wringing his hands helplessly. He is continually at work bringing good out of the most devastating situations of bad and evil, without violating anyone's free will that he gave them. Let's pray. Almighty God and Savior, thank you for being who you are and for this meeting this morning. I ask for your direction and the ways to go in our decision-making. And I ask also that you please guide us and lead us in your truth and teach us, because we don't know the outcomes like you do. So, we need your wisdom. Therefore, Lord, be our light and be our guide, because you are God, our Savior, and our hope is in you all day long. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here today, whether that be in person or online. And with that, the next thing we need to talk about is this proclamation. I'll read that. It's, as you'll see as we go through it, it's supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans. Whereas the residents of Reno County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Reno County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of formal orders, religious groups, civil service. And by functioning as county veterans service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 42 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during this period during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Reno County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes that specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for veterans. Reno County hereby declares from November 4th through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that it... An observance of Operation Green Light, Reno County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2025. So with that, I better get out a pen. You guys might do the same. We need to sign this. And personally, I want to personally thank all those who have served. Many family members in our family have. We have any veterans here today that we can thank personally? I know one, two, both the sheriff and Mr. Lutz. And I thank you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing and still doing. We gonna present that to somebody, or is it just?
Yeah, we'll have a picture.
Good deal.
Get some more handcuffs.
We better get her all signed up before we had it to. We want this to be unanimous. There you go.
Thank you. I know you're still there, but you're still there. We present this to you.
And I'm sure the two gentlemen here realize they're accepting on behalf of many others who aren't here today and couldn't be here. I know them both personally and I'm safe in saying that. I know I am. Thank you guys. Next on our agenda is public comments on items not on our agenda today. So I would ask those of you out there, or I guess all of us in the room, does anybody have any comments they'd wish to make on items not on the agenda today? Seeing nobody moving forward, I'd say there are no comments today. The next thing on our agenda is revisions, additions or revisions to our agenda. Do I hear anything along that line?
Yeah, I would like to move consented into item 6I to a business item if we could, 7E.
And that would make it 7E. Well, it's, I'd say there's no reason for a vote or anything. It's generally been accepted that if one of the commissioners or several feel it should be discussed further. So at this point, with that being moved, is there anything else as far as revisions, additions? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the agenda with revisions.
Second? Second. Have a move in a second. Motion in a second. Are there any other further discussions before we vote on any of these items? Anything from over there? Are we getting carp for the horse or something?
No, no, I just was asking a question.
Good enough. So, we have a motion in a second. Abigail, would you please help us?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. At this point, we've got five new business items now. And the first one is a district attorney's annual report.
Good morning. I presented you with a fairly detailed written report of my, for an annual report. I'm not going to read it word for word. I'm going to go through a couple of highlights. Right now, my staff stands at 24. We have nine attorneys. Thank you commissioners for that. We're full, except we've got two openings in the support staff. And we've been interviewing for those and probably will fill those by the end of the week and then we'll be full staffed. We're probably one of the only district attorney's offices in the state that is currently full staffed. That's thanks to one of our attorneys leaving, deciding that high school teaching wasn't for him anymore and came back. So we're at full staff. One of the good things about that, when we look at our caseload, last year in December, we had 124 cases pending jury trial. Right now, we have just 84 adult criminal cases pending jury trial. So there has been movement along those lines. And so I really appreciate the additional staff. Drug court is still going well. We'll have a total of five graduations this year. So that's a good thing. As of October 13th, when I submitted this report, we were at 67% of our budget. So we're under budget for the year at this point. I do appreciate all the work that Kyle and his staff have been doing on our behalf to take care of the leaky roof. It was accentuated a little bit this year by all the big rains that we had. But in last month or so, we've had no leaks. So we're actually got everybody back in their positions and hopefully we will have no more issues with that. And thanks again, Kyle, for all the hard work you've been doing for that. As you know, back in the beginning of '24, I initiated a first-time felony drug diversion program. It's been very successful. We now have nine successful diversion terminations, which means nine people who've gone through the diversion and their cases have been terminated, dismissed because of what they've done, the work that they've done. And hopefully, we'll never see those people in the criminal justice again, justice system again. So we're very happy with that. I also reported last year that I had come up with a risk assessment tool to try to work on bonds. I submitted that to the chief judge at that point in time and was told that we would not be implementing it because the state was working on a similar tool that we would be using. We're now nearly a year later and still don't have that tool. So I resubmitted the idea to the new administrative judge and have not heard back from him at this point. So we're trying, but we may have to wait for the Supreme Court and OJA to finish their work before we can implement a tool. I also talked last year about reviewing boxes from the mines. We've brought another 27 boxes up that I'm in the process of going through. And I believe all 27 of those boxes will probably be destroyed. It's really old stuff, so it'll take those 27 boxes out and we won't be paying for that space in the new year. The other big thing that we've got coming up is the 25th Annual Toys for Tots Drive. And that's going to be the first two weeks of December. When I came here as deputy district attorney in 2021, or 20, sorry, 2001, I went to an AmBucks presentation and they were presenting on Toys for Tots. And I grabbed a box, put it in my office with my boss's permission. And that started the 25-year tradition in the courthouse. First couple of years, just putting boxes in our office, putting signs in the hallway. That's when we were down on first floor. And we're starting to get going on this. And since then, the commissioners have allowed us to do this on an annual basis. It's now being done throughout the county. We have several departments that put boxes in their departments. Sheriff's Office is one. They do, they put boxes here and out at the jail. They were dethroned last year. We have a contest. We started out, it was a contest between HPD and Sheriff's Office. And no disrespect to the HPD, but the Sheriff's Office beat them so badly, year in and year out, that I opened it up for the rest of the county. And last year, it was Public Works that brought in the most toys. So I hope that competition will continue throughout the county. That trophy is down in Don's office right now. So it is a traveling trophy and we'll see if it gets returned to the Sheriff's Office. But Department of Aging, clerks have put it out, put boxes out over the annex. Obviously, we have boxes down here. Even Heartland Credit Union has joined in with us and they put boxes in their credit union offices. And last year was the first UV ride, UTV ride that we're doing down in South Hutch. So it's really expanding. I'm hoping to have 25 boxes of toys this year for the 25th anniversary. And I gave each one of you, as I came in today, a challenge coin that we have for this particular year.
Do we have an administrative box for like us and you guys and all that?
Yeah. Administration has supported us. So these challenge coins, we're not paid for by tax money, by the way, have my seal on one side and then 25th Annual Toys for Tots Drive in 2025 and a Toys for Tots logo that I got permission to use. And so we have, these challenge coins will be given out to anybody who brings a toy as long as we have them. About 300 of them, so hopefully that'll encourage people. We also have our cookies that will have, actually have this logo, this 25th annual logo on the cookies. So we're looking forward to that and hopefully we'll get a good response again this year. The county's been very supportive of that effort. So if you get your toys now, you don't have to worry about buying them during the rush and later on. And you can just bring them and drop them in the box. So.
Shop early and often?
Early and often. And I like voting, but shopping. Shopping early and often, bring as many toys as you want. The good thing about these toys is they stay in Reno County. These toys aren't shipped out to other counties. This is for the people of Reno County who can't afford to get their kids a good Christmas. So it's a really good effort. I know there are other efforts that go into helping families, but this one's been going now for 25 years. So I will stand for questions.
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I don't know how much Judge Gill has influence on things, but I would highly suggest that he review and encourage the implementation of your risk assessment plan. As from a personal, I can't speak for all the commission, but from my standpoint, you've put a lot of time and work and effort into this. And I don't know why maybe Reno County can't be the leader in this and show the state how it's done.
Well, other counties have done similar plans. So even if we just do it in the interim, I think it would help the population in the jail because more people would probably be released on bond. Because we'd be using metrics across the board that would be equal for all people that are coming into the jail. So.
That's why I would encourage Judge Gill to have a conversation with you if he has any questions over the risk assessment tool you presented and to encourage that implementation as soon as possible.
I will pass that word along to the judge.
Well, I'll stand with that comment. So not that I hold any weight, but you know, just in case he's listening, I think we'll, okay, well, pretty much unanimous, I'm sure.
We all know, and the sheriff knows better than anybody, what effect that has on his budget and the budget of Reno County. If things don't move progressively, the taxpayers end up catching that. And that's why you guys have been working on this. And I sincerely hope you have some success, or some success comes from somewhere, state or here or somewhere.
Well, we'll see how that works out.
Let's hope so. Anything else anybody has?
Appreciate your job.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Yeah. It's my understanding that that water leak deal, it was a temporary deal, but we're working on a permanent one later today. So. So we'll go from there. And thank you, Tom. Next item on our agenda, courthouse dome repairs. There we go.
Good morning. Good morning commissioners. Kyle Stewart, Director of Facilities. So as Mr. Stanton alluded to, so over the past 10 months of my employment within the county, there have been significant water leaks within the fifth floor offices on both sides, the east and west side offices, as well as in the dome. So if you could scroll down and show some pictures that are attached, it kind of portrays what's going on. So during the Pishney project, I don't know if you can quite see it there, but there's a copper gutter line. Everything from that gutter line above was taken off, repaired, fixed, whatever it needed to be. However, below that gutter line, onto the roof line, there were spot repairs. So I talked to the architect who ran the project and asked why this was not repaired during that time. I mean, it's much cheaper to repair things the correct way at the time you're doing the work. And the architect told me it was eliminated due to budget. And the architect told me it was eliminated due to budget constraints. So whatever that means, I, I'm not sure. I wasn't here. However, we still have this huge problem. So if you keep scrolling down, there's several more photos. You can see several cracks in the sidewall of the dome that really need to be replaced. So whenever rain happens, water is just running right in there behind the stone into the dome. The dome is higher than the ceilings on the fifth floors. So the water all runs downhill. It's going to find the, the lowest spot to travel, runs into the ceilings and this causes chaos from there. So about two months ago, the facilities team made an attempt at a temporary repair. We took stone caulking.
When you say facilities, who are you talking about?
Maintenance, sorry.
Maintenance, yeah, okay.
But, uh, yeah, we took the stone mortar caulking and identified some very large gaps up on the flat spots of the sidewall before the gutter line. Some of these gaps, I think if you scroll down, there might be some pictures, but at the worst, they were three quarters of an inch wide. So it should be.
A little further back. I saw you go by.
Scroll up, keep going. Is there one more set? Uh, may not have got included in this document, but three quarters of an inch wide gap. This is open, all the mortars broken, cracked out, gone.
Was that stuff that Pishney worked on?
No.
That was not part of their repair then?
Nope. So this portion specifically of the dome was eliminated due to budget constraints, according to the architect. So I don't.
You know, I'm going to make a comment here. The, the sorry part of that whole thing is, and I'm not backing up and, and believe me, I'm trying to take out, talk out of school on commissioners that was in here before me, but back in ninety-nine, when I tried to fix that and they wouldn't go along with the plan to do it correctly back then, which was secure to face and doing the last American because they wanted to keep it on historical register to fix that, so it could stretch and bend and mold and not leak. Here we are, millions later and still have a damn leak. It makes me mad.
Yep. It precisely. And this is kind of what I'm proposing today. So I reached out to eleven different masonry contractors, nine of which declined the job due to either the size of the project, the height of the building, or the scaffolding requirements we're going to need on the north side of that dome. Two of the eleven offered to come walk the premises, walk the jobs, one of which gave me a ballpark price. It was a company out of Wichita. I will not disclose who it is. Ever since then, no contact whatsoever, no email, phone, can't get ahold of them. And that ballpark price was a hundred and forty thousand dollars to repair this correctly. The quote that is presented before you today is from Mid Continental Restoration out of Fort Scott. So they were the, the last of the eleven companies to come and look at this project. I, I was very impressed with the, the estimator that came out, had a very vast knowledge of historical buildings, how to fix it correctly, you know, do it once, do it right, be done. So this repair honestly needs to happen. If it does not happen and it does not get fixed long-term, it's just going to be short-term solutions to try to fix a long-term problem. And with that, later down the line could come structural integrity issues and then it becomes much, much worse. So.
Are they going to be able to do that before it freezes and causes more problems? I think once that water gets in there and freezes, then we really got problems, right?
Yeah. That is the goal. So if, you know, if this gets approved today, I'll make the phone call right after this meeting and we'll get scheduled when we can get this done.
Well, that's where the original company was from, Fort Scott. That very well may be them coming back.
Is there any questions they may have on this or anything you'd like me to cover?
Are they kind of, are they going to stamp either, are they going to guarantee no leaks or, or is it not guaranteed this deal?
So the, the parts that they repair, yes. So however, the parts that they don't repair, they're not going to guarantee that work. So the, the total amount for this quote was just over sixty-nine thousand dollars. It also is going to repair the east side of the wall, not the dome, but the wall of the, exterior wall of the courthouse, above the windows and the district attorney's office. So there are pictures of that. It's, uh, just mortars missing from brick.
Your confidence level that this is going to, that's the targeted area that'll take the leak away?
Yes.
You feel it?
So the, the temporary repair we did, ever since then, there's been no leaks. So that lets us know, hey, we've identified the right spots, you know.
We've not had the kind of rains we had in the spring, but there's still been some rains.
Right. And prior, I mean, even just the, the light is sprinkled, you would get water dripping out of light fixtures, ceiling tiles, emergency lights. I mean, it, it was bad. So, and I really do commend the district attorney's office. They have been wonderful to work with during this, you know. Very reasonable for them to be highly frustrated. You know, this has been going on for years.
Yeah.
And it's impacting their workload. I mean, they had several office spaces they couldn't use because if it rained, any folders, paperwork would just get ruined.
Well, when I was recently, right after I was elected, we got tours of all the facilities and I couldn't believe what I walked into up there. When your district attorney has his desk covered with plastic, most of the stuff moved out of his office. The, the people who greet you when you walk into that office.
Have raincoats on?
No, I'm just kidding. Well, you could see the ceiling was gone and, and you went back. That man has way more patience than I have. I'd have been on somebody. But you mentioned something a little lower on the windows. Now that was Pishney's problem.
So if you scroll down there, Randy, there's a picture of it. I think it might be the last picture.
Because according to contract, they were supposed to be working down there, correct?
So they did spot repairs on this section. I, I do have the file that they documented every single point that they touched on this courthouse.
Yeah.
So that, it, it kind of goes in line with that, but really above those three windows on the top, all that needs redone. The, the water is leaking behind the window. It's ruining the sheet rock in the new office expansion or remodels. We're, we're going to have to fix that, paint, light fixtures. I mean, the, the whole nine yards, same thing.
I mean, if it doesn't get fixed, I know seventy thousand dollars. I'll open this up for comment. Or you got anything special you want to add, Kyle? I mean.
No, just thank you for the consideration on this.
Well, in my estimation, this is one of those deals where you don't have a yes or no vote. It's a have to, as you mentioned. The longer you wait, the more damage you do. You fix that, you turn around and you fix the next, next rain, you fix some more. It's, it, it, it just, the cost is, is a lot of money and it isn't. You can't have people, we've got space that we can't use because of it. It's one of those votes, yeah, you can say yes or no, but it's yes because you got to have a functional facility.
We better get this one before he backs out.
Yeah. He's, he's the only one that's offered to do the job and offered to do it what sounds like reasonably. So anybody else have any comments?
I don't.
Thoughts on this thing? I, I got some comments that'd probably get me in trouble if I said it. Patrick would have to rein me in, but I, I know a little bit about guys who run construction jobs and, and the pressure they're under from both ends. And it seems to me that it's discretionary stuff.
No, you know, when you've got a facility of this age and this massive, you're going to have repairs like this from time to time. This is kind of a little bit different situation, but it's just, it's to be expected, you know, you're going to have things that have to be done. It's unfortunate that it wasn't all corrected the first time, but I'm glad you found it and I appreciate you doing that, you and your staff, so.
Well, it was my understanding that all of the stone was going to be re-pointed and tucked, retucked. And somewhere along the line, somewhere that got put in and taken out. And I know we did look at the interior stability of the dome itself and did what we thought was, according to the engineer, and that was not Pishney. But the engineer suggested some things, but it was my understanding at the time that it was all going to be tuck pointed.
I remember being a part of a facility and being on that fifth floor, tearing out the old stuff and then trying to find leaks around those windows because every time it rained, we would try and put some caulking around the windows to keep, you know, to seal them. But when it comes from above, it was kind of hard to find. So I'm glad you guys were able to find it, the leaks, and if they do it like it's supposed to be done, then I would feel comfortable with being able to put the sheet rock back and, and get the ceilings back together. So you're right. So if somebody goes in the district attorney's office or those new offices, it looks new again, not, not like it is. So thanks for finding those leaks. I'm sure that was not a fun, fun job.
Yeah. Thank you. The, the team did an outstanding job on identifying that. It was, it was not a quick process to figure out where. Through the process of elimination is the only way we were able to track it down.
Yeah. One of those things. At this point, Kyle, if we don't have any more comment from you, we don't have any questions here to you. I'd say I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to accept the bid from Mid Continental Restoration, the amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We've talked it over pretty good, but if there's additional comment somebody wants to make before we vote, now's the time.
Randy might state where that money's coming from, just for the public.
Out of the CIP Reserve Fund.
CIP.
There's always questions, so, yeah, I just wanted to state that.
Always initials. Let's, CIP is.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know when I read things, it's just initials. And if you're not a part of it, you don't realize that it was put away for that purpose a long time ago, take care of emergencies. So, Abby, help, please help us.
Commissioner Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Winger.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner.
Yes. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate your digging into this.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
You're up again with the fire panel.
I am, back to back.
Yeah. Did we get to rough you around some more?
So fire panel replacement for the courthouse. So I'm sure you read through the agenda topics, so I won't go through it line by line, but a few things that I did want to point out. So this project was earmarked for replacement in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. So we're just now kind of getting around to getting it done. We, we need to get it done. A key sentence that I want to point out in my summary is there are parts of this fire panel that are not working correctly. Parts are obsolete. The manufacturer got bought out in twenty-sixteen. So it's hard to find parts for something that's that age now with no new parts incoming. It's been having several issues for years, triggering false alarms, and it's gotten to the point where staff doesn't even respond anymore. That, that is something that deeply concerns me and we need to get mitigated and repaired. You know, because what if one of those times it, it is an actual emergency? So, but it's very hard to have that train of thought when the fire alarm goes off multiple times a week and it ends up being some nuisance or a false trip somewhere. So I did put this project out to bid. So however, I do want to state that Firetronics is a company here locally. Currently, they have all of the fire alarm jobs with each building within the county. So I decided I want to put this out to bid and not use any kind of exemptions in the purchasing policy, just to make sure that costs were comparable. You know, I didn't want the company to potentially charge several tens of thousand dollars more just because they're embedded already with their equipment. So as you can see on the bid sheet, the, the low bidder for the job was Pinnacle Fire and Automation out of Wichita, in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. However, my recommendation to this board is to proceed with a quote from Firetronics. I do understand that it is a little more money in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. However, my justification for that is over the life of the asset. So thinking how long this panel's going to last? We're going to get trip charged every single visit from Wichita to here, from this, from any company that's not local. Over the life of the asset, that is more than going to make up for the cost difference right now. So average trip charge, it, it depends on the company. On the low end, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. On the high end, it's three hundred dollars. So that, that's just to come here. So the funding for this is currently in the CIP Reserve, since it was earmarked for a different year and did not get completed. The, the difference of the, the budget of the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to the forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars would also be coming out of the reserve fund.
Did you state the figures right? You said thirty-five thousand versus forty-five. Here it says forty-five versus forty-one. That's the difference, thirty-five hundred?
No, so.
Oh.
It was budgeted for thirty-five thousand.
Back.
Few years back.
Several years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I understand now.
So.
Why, why didn't this get done back when it was slated? We just didn't have time or we, someone didn't approve it or?
I do not know the answer to that question.
I think it was time. Just with all the other projects, this one didn't get completed.
Didn't get through it.
So Firetronics did perform a kind of health assessment for the county on all the facilities and the fire systems. So essentially, what, what priority do we need to follow? You know, what all issues do we have going on? What are the recommendations? When to do them? This courthouse panel was number one on that priority list to replace.
What is the life expectancy of a panel like that?
Typically between fifteen to twenty years. But there, there's a lot of variables on that too, so.
Problem we've experienced, sometimes it's awful hard to marry two different systems. Yes, you can make it happen, but they don't always function well together.
Correct.
I mean, you, you've seen the green tractor on the orange deal or the red deal and, and the computers aren't talking to each other and, and you spend a lot of money trying to marry the two together and it never does work exactly like everything designed by the same company.
Correct.
I see that as maybe more than the life savings.
Yeah.
Because you'll have them out here all the time trying to marry the two.
Yeah. And just to point out to this board that it's something I failed to kind of say earlier. So currently we have Siemens devices, that is the manufacturer brand of everything. Firetronics has Siemens devices. The Pinnacle Fire Company uses Honeywell devices, so it'd be two totally different brands, lines. There's no interchangeability. We can't stock, you know, one type of detector and we can use it anywhere. We would have to do multiples. I mean, the list just goes on and on there, so.
Well, I, that just struck me because we, we witness it in our business all the time.
Yeah. And it, it makes everything common in all the buildings, so a good chance they stock it if they had to come service somebody else's unit, ordering parts and waiting or whatever. So, yeah.
How's your relationship with this? How's your relationship with this, with that Firetronics? Is it a pretty stable one?
Yes.
We've been around a long time.
Yeah. Yep. They have been super helpful for me during my time here so far. I mean, anytime I call, email, I get a response the same day.
Same day.
Which can't be said for a lot of organizations.
Can't be said for anything anymore.
Pretty much right. Any other questions of Kyle on this project? Or you have anything further you want to state?
Nope. The only thing I'll say is if this does get approved, I'll be working with Michael Kane, the fire marshal, on kind of best steps moving forward. How do we do like a fire watch or whatever needs done there during the time of impairments?
Oh, yeah. Okay. While the switch is going on. Well, I mean, that's going to have to be done, no matter who does the work.
Right.
I mean, that's not going to change everything. So with that, if there aren't any further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I, I motion to accept the bid for Firetronics, just because it's a, it's a stable working relationship and it's probably worth the extra money.
I hear a second anywhere.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Abigail will need your help.
Commissioner Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Winger.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner.
Yes. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you for your time this morning.
I better look.
That's it for me.
Maybe, maybe.
Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. Go make your phone calls. You said you'd go make. Okay, we got purchase of pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Ron Brewbaker, Director of Automotive, here before you to get, seek approval for purchase of the Ford units for the sheriff's department. They are a little bit more money per se, per unit, but in the background and summary of my agenda item, hopefully I detailed all that out for you. Do you have any questions for me?
The only thing I'd say, you are recommending the Ford units.
That is correct.
We've got all Ford units now.
That is correct. All the current equipment we have will interchange and go into the 26 model year units. No extra equipment will need to be purchased.
So if you purchase new equipment for the other units, you're saying down here an estimated three to four per unit to put that in, is that what you're saying?
That's just the purchase of the equipment between $3,000 to $4,000.
Right.
So we've got.
You still have installation labor taken out.
Right. That, well, that's all figured in with the Fords, you know, because we do the installation and setups.
That's what I mean.
Right. That, that charge won't change.
So what you're telling us is the cost would be about the same?
It'd be slightly more still, even with buying new equipment for the Dodges as purchasing the Fords. But just the background with our history with Fords, the working relationship we have with both Ford dealerships here in Hutch and in Wichita. And in the background and summary, also, I included that Ford has multiple times covered non-warrantyable items. They went ahead and covered them either 100% or at a cost share, most time Ford 85%, County 15% of items that was outside the warranty period because of our fleet score that we have. And that's based on the number of units that we buy, the amount of Ford parts we buy, and then the warranty claims that we have as Reno County. And that's all departments in Reno County included. Public Works, you know, landfill, they buy Fords. They're all purchased under a Ford, a Ford fleet number, and that's where we get our rating.
The equipment that you put in the units that, that you transfer from an older unit to newer unit, how, again, I'm asking life expectancy for that equipment. So I mean, if we buy these and then you're like, okay, well, this unit's dead. I know you repair them a lot and do updates and stuff.
Right.
But I just wanted to kind of be able to pass it on.
So in 2011, Ford first came out with the Police Interceptor Utility, which is a Explorer-based. They kept that same platform through 2019. So from 2011 to 2019, all the equipment would interchange. 2020 model year, they changed the design, so we had to start purchasing new equipment on the units we bought, 2020 there forward. We now have all the second gen per se body styles. Ford don't tell us what the life expectancy of that platform is. We're hoping it's another five to seven years. You know, generally, the Crown Vic platform, going back in history, was around for 26, 27 years, and virtually nothing changed. Safety came around. That's why they redeveloped the Police Interceptor, made it a utility vehicle. They did have sedan models for the first couple of model years, but they quit making those. They're strictly a Explorer-based. Some of the construction materials are different for the police units versus a civilian Explorer. So as for life expectancy, what's going to stay on this platform currently, we don't know. You know, it could change next year. We just don't know.
So this is for the sheriff, for the sheriff's deputies that are driving these. Have they driven anything else like the Chrysler products to see any difference that they maybe don't like or like? Or, I mean, are they happy with what they have in the Fords?
I believe so. I mean, when, back when I was a patrol captain, when I took over, we had kind of a hodgepodge of vehicles. We had Chargers, Crown Vics. So we decided to more or less take on a model somewhat similar. I think Southwest Airlines did the same thing. They went with the same product. So we could have parts on the shelf, and we have one product that's easily to maintain and transition from one vehicle to another. So that's why we went to the Ford, the Ford concept. Ford was the first ones that came out with a police advisory board to advise them on how to put together a car. So that's kind of where we've stuck with.
So a question I have, whenever you're done, I'll jump in here. That's all right. No, I didn't mean to cut you off, Sheriff, sorry.
No, no, no.
Question I have, these prices were sourced from where for the vehicles?
Midwest Superstore and then Midway Motors. Allen Samuels did not return a bid.
They didn't?
They did not return a request for quote.
Okay. Yeah, your literature said that. The reason I asked some of the questions I have, at first appearance, it looks like more money, but there are things in the background that you had in your report that, that kind of made that balance out. And I kind of wanted to mention publicly so that, that for the general public viewing this, that there are reasons for your, your recommendation. And the sheriff confirms a whole lot of that. He wasn't on the hot seat today, but he helped us out. But, but, you know, just for the public's general knowledge, it's probably a good deal that we had you speak to that. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to thwart what the sheriff and the crew want to drive and use, but I know Dodges are used pretty widely in the State Patrol and a lot of other police departments, too. And I'm just going to make this statement because I think I probably should. When we're looking at less money and we spend more money, we always have to save. And I know we did on a fire alarm. I get that. So very well, probably we'll do that here. But I don't want this board, and that's my opinion, to make a habit of spending more money all the time just because of a want. When we're spending the public dollars, we have to be pretty calculated at doing that because we're answerable for it. And so I, you know, I'm just going to leave that as a comment. I don't take it lightly when we, no matter what the issue is up here, when we're spending money beyond what the bid is. And this has been a little contention of mine a couple of times watching the bids. It just doesn't seem like we land some here in town or that or this or that. But I mean, I don't think it's the end of the world if we start switching over some other way, though, either, if somebody's got the low bid. I mean, they're not going to bid the next time if we don't give them the bid when they're this much lower. I mean, I can tell you that. You're going to stop giving people the bid on things that we can have some valid bidding. And so it's, I hate this when this kind of situation comes up. I'll just be honest.
And historically, we have some, on the Fords, I reached out to Lewis Auto Group out in Western Kansas, Conklin Auto Group. Being they don't have a Ford dealership in their family in Hutchinson, the 5% plays into effect. And dealerships won't even submit.
I say that same with respect to the dealership here that's Chrysler that have bid on several times and not made the bid. Now you've got somebody bidding on a Chrysler that made the bid, and then they're going to get shut out.
Right.
Pretty soon, you're just going to get that bid. It's what you're going to get from Midwest Ford. And so I don't take that lightly, I guess.
Who was the Chrysler dealership that gave us the bid?
Allen Samuels.
Here in town?
Here in town, yes. And a little bit of perspective on that, that was, the sheriff's department was approached because they had some holdover units, and they made an offer to them on those units. So that's what prompted to send out requests for quotes for Chrysler products. Initially, that's why the dates, the receiving dates of the bids, there's about a month apart.
So this is from here at Allen Samuels?
Yes.
I thought you said Midway.
I'm sorry.
You said Midwest, and then you said Midway.
Midwest Superstore.
Okay, I was confused. I guess I didn't catch that in there.
Midway Motors here in Hutch submitted for the Chryslers. Allen Samuels did not submit a bid.
Okay.
So both Hutchinson stores that sell Chrysler in their family of vehicles did, they was sent requests for quotes, yes. So that, they was, they had some holdover units from 2024 here at Allen Samuels. They reached out to sheriff's department, you know, offered them to them at a price. We had to go through the request for quote process. So, and that's why the specs were written the way they were for the Dodges, very, very minimal specs to meet that that they had on hand.
So the specs for the Ford were different than the?
Manufacturers have different items. But the two Ford, competing Ford bids were bid on identical specifications and requirements that I submitted. It was exact, all, all options were the same.
Saying between the two different.
It's an apple and an orange you're comparing. Dodge has different options than Ford does.
With that. I did a little quick calculation here. And based upon what you gave us here, there's originally a $5,868 difference between the Dodge and the Ford. But if it costs $1,225 more for the hardware and software, or for the, over what the Ford is, that's basically $2,250 versus $900. And if you look at the fact that it's going to cost between $3,000 and $4,000, which I use $3,500 for equipment cost to outfit its unit, then the actual difference between the two at this point in time, I realize if you continue with some Dodge, surely the equipment costs are not going to be the same. But if they are, that's $1,143 difference between the two when you're completely done for you. Unless I made a mistake, there might be one or two dollars difference in my quick math. So instead of an actual true $5,868, it brings it back down to $1,143.
I just wanted to put the difference of the actual quoted amount there and then.
That's fine. But when you give the other information, which will all figure into the operational cost, period. Randy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I wanted, I'm kind of going back a little bit. I just wanted to explain why this is even on the agenda. Separate from Ford versus Dodge, that's one decision you guys can make. But this is not the normal round of vehicle purchases for the sheriff's office. So this would have to come out of the County Equipment Reserve Fund, not the County Equipment Fund, it'd be the Reserve Fund. We have undesignated about $690,000 in there. So this would come out of there. But this came up because, and I've kind of mentioned this to you in reports in the past, but just so the public's aware, the Ford Order Bank is open right now for the 26 models. It closes probably early January if there's, if they haven't filled up all the, I guess, number of vehicles they're going to produce. So the assumption is they probably won't be available by January for the 26 budget. We would need to order, we could get three vehicles now that would be budgeted for 26. But by doing this, we're having, it's not the 26 money. The 26 budget money will still be there. This is out of County Equipment Reserve Funds. So this is in addition, or separate or addition, there still would be money in 26 for the sheriff's on vehicles.
Does that replenish this fund, or does it just?
It could be a discussion later. I just wanted to mention that. But I also want to point out that the fleet right now is down three or four, three?
Three.
Three vehicles. So this is also kind of needed to catch up with some vehicles that are not in use right now. They're not available for use. So the SO is needing vehicles, but I just wanted to point out this is separate from normal when we have a budget. This will be the Reserve Fund. So.
The order banks generally, they set a closing date. Right now, it's the second week in January of '26. As Ford receives their orders and come the end of the year, they start getting more and more orders in, the likelihood, and it happened again earlier this year, the order banks, they end up closing them early. So for us to wait until January 1 to send out requests for quotes, get the quotes back, get before the board to get approval, the order banks would already be closed for, to purchase cars in '26, for the 26 model year. So that's part of the reason why we're here early. The order banks during COVID got shifted and supply of the vehicles went way behind, so it kind of fell behind. Now they're starting to trend back towards order banks in the, say, '25 to receive 26 vehicles. That's what they're trending back to, which is pre-COVID order statuses.
And we're short three right now, and that's due to casualties?
Yes.
Wracks?
Yes.
And so we're basically, we're short three right now.
Just to get the fleet back at full numbers, yes.
So for '26, the budget they have would probably need to be used to, again, whether we do something that we talked about later today in the study session, or to order three more vehicles anytime in '26, and it may be the '27 model. But, so I would say it's not getting rid of the '26 budget authority for three new vehicles. It's just adding additional now out of reserve and taking, doing it now.
And the funds from the wrecked vehicles goes where? The money gone from the insurance, will it, will it go against this, or?
It'll go back. So this will be paid out of the Reserve Fund. The insurance money will probably go back into the Special Equipment Fund where vehicles were purchased out of. That's, so for the 26 budget authority for next year, what the sheriff has, that's in Special Equipment Fund. This is the Special Equipment Reserve. This is when we move money over, kind of as you've talked about earlier with CIP, the CIP, when things don't get completed, we move it to reserve. Or if there's a little bit of extra, we put it in the Reserve Fund for this type of situation. We didn't plan for three vehicles to be out of use, but this actually works in favor of that at this time.
So that, the extra revenue from those insurance companies and so forth will go towards next 2026?
It'll help, it'll go back into the fund that originally purchased it, which will help the '27 budget. It'll give '26 cash, but it'll help when we do the '27 budget. This is where all vehicles that Ron and Automotive take care of, all, well, all the ones that he works on, separate from aging. ones that he works on, separate from aging, in transit, come out of this fund, Special Equipment.
Well, I could probably see over the life of the vehicle, you know, this two, I mean, I, I got nothing against Dodge, I own two, but, you know, when you got that many vehicles and, and you're trying to maintain them, when you get so many vehicles and you got so many parts on the shelf, you, you know, you're, yeah, I, I could see that over life, that, that, that the savings would probably, would probably catch, you know, would catch up with itself, and, and not, and not really affect the, the total price of the vehicle over, over its lifetime. I, I've got nothing against, against Automotive having the Ford, it, it, it keeps things a lot simpler for everybody. Money's money, though, you know how I am on money, so I don't, I kind of, I kind of feel like that, but I guess at some point, we gotta, we gotta listen to what they say on, on what they're gonna, on how, how it's gonna, how it's gonna work for Automotive.
And of the two Ford bids received, Midway Motors was $200 per unit cheaper than Midwest Superstore.
Midwest Superstore. And probably the vehicles they replaced it are worthless, aren't they?
Well, three of them have been totaled.
Okay, so yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we will get-
Insurance money?
Some insurance reimbursement, yes. But we won't have anything for trade on these three.
And our insurance rates will probably go up. That's the way the world works. If there's not any more discussion, I'd entertain a motion, or you got a question?
Just got a question, have we done away with the hybrids and gone back to straight, or?
We still have, I believe, two hybrids in the fleet currently, but we are not bidding hybrids in the future.
Lot more problems, or what's the deal?
There hasn't been a significant number of problems with the hybrid components, it's just that they just never were really adapted real well.
For the way they're being used. Well, guys, like I said, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, let's try this, I, I motion to, um-
To purchase the-
He's got it on.
Yeah, I, I entertain to, to take staff's recommendation on the, on the Fords.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion before we vote? Abigail, please.
Commissioner Parks.
Nothing against the cars, but no.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here, E, we moved this office furniture deal off the consent agenda to, to, to a business item. You suggested, Randy, you got-
Well, my concern is one I had when we finished, and Sheriff, it's not with the furniture that you need necessarily, it's my concern with the process in the future. I kind of wish Kyle was still in here, because I, I made a comment when we were doing this building, when we were nearing the end, and they come hit us up for some money for furnishings. That ought to be included in the original building plan bid, because I've done it many times with the print, I'll take it to an office supplier, I'll take it to whatever I need and have that bid, so it's in the total price. I, I'm getting worried of people coming back and asking at the end of a project for money, because it can be included in your very initial price for that. Now, we all know there's going to be little things here and there that you gotta have, you gotta set up things with, but when we're talking $41,000 for furnishings, that could have been in the original bid of what it was going to take, because we knew the floor plan, so that should have been included in the cost to us to tell the public, this is what we're going to spend for a total project, darn key, and, and it wasn't there, I mean, I know, you probably got an answer to that, but I, but I have asked that request, myself personally, and I'm just one of the Board, that we do it that way, so the public has a full cost and the right upfront, so.
No, I, I appreciate the comment, and that's duly noted, in the, in the future, I, I hope we can actually get that in there. However, I believe in the contract that we have with Hutch, and when they did the design build, that that was, we felt that we could go out on our own, and we excluded that from the contract, because there's, I, and, you, you all know as well as I do, that when you go through a third party and they sub out everything, everybody's got their hand in their pockets, or your pockets. I figured if we went out on our own to do some of this stuff, that we could save money.
I, I agree with that, but my, my concern and my question here, I guess the only reason I wanted to see it pulled off, it was that I agree that they send those things out to bid, but you also can put your hands on a print, because we paid for it, and then you can send that to your own party to have that bid out. I'm, I'm not, I'm not un- okay with the process, but we can tell them when you're done with the design build, we approve it, I want copies of that.
Sure.
And the furniture part, we're going to do, so we can give that to the Board to present.
Right, and, and this is strictly just for the classroom portion.
I get it.
So, so we still have, like, some of the other renovations that, that's been throughout the courthouse, and, and the annex, and everywhere that they've bought new furniture, we've actually got ahold of some of that stuff, and that's what we're going to put in the offices-
Yeah.
And, and reutilize.
Well, I'd heard that, but I just, I just wanted to make that statement, so in the future, if departments can look at possibly trying to get ahead of it like that, I think the public would, I've had public feedback on the amount of money on that agenda, and they're, they're questioning why, and I guess, that's the reason I'm addressing it today is, is I, and I, my comment back to them, I'm going to address it, that we'll try to do this on the onset of a project, if we can make it happen that way, so it's a little more palatable, you know? And you're, I'm not picking on you today here, but I, I just wanted to see that change.
One of the comments that came up was exactly what you're talking about, there's surely furniture out there within the county, I'm glad to hear you're utilizing that where you can.
Absolutely.
Because that was some of the comments that, that came over, and that's partially why I was glad to see this moved to a business item, so we could ask, and you could give details, rather than a consent agenda item, where, you know, it's, this way we get a little more discussion for the public that, that was interested, and, and, and writing us, and, and it's more or less what, why it got moved, and, and you're answering the questions the people had-
Sure.
-without us asking you.
No, and that's, uh-
So, I mean, it's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm kind of glad we did it this way, just for the, the openness of the process.
Now, just looking ahead, when we first started down this venture with the furniture, with the, with the table chairs, lectern, it, it was actually around $55,000, $56,000, and I was like, holy smokes. But the process that we went through, for the, for the, you know, the seal quotes, actually brought it down. Apparently, there's different processes when you do a state contract for, for the, for the equipment, and that we weren't aware of at the time, so that, that's why it's down to what it is now. And I say down, because, like I said initially, it was like a $55,000, $56,000, but-
What specifically is this going to, building, is this going to go in?
It's, it's a training facility that's being built out by the landfill.
And is the building built?
It's being built.
Being built.
It's currently under construction.
Uh-huh. Is, is that something we approved, or is that, is that out of, out of the Sheriff's Funds, or?
This was approved a couple of years ago, we've been working on this process.
Okay, well, that's why I'm not-
It was before your time, but yes, CIP Fund, CIP Reserve Fund is finishing up, but yes, I am.
Actually, some of this started before-
Yeah.
We, we came on, we came on before you, so it's, it's been a long process, a lot of it we inherited, I mean, once you're this deep in something-
Yeah.
You don't, I mean, you don't have a lot of potential to, to backtrack.
With the budget problems we've had, I'm, I'm wary of, of this, but again, as you said, it's, it's there, I mean-
Well, to make a statement, I know you-
Do we quit, or do we go on?
Didn't you obtain a grant? For some of this?
It was written into a grant-
Yeah.
And we didn't get the grant.
Yes.
So moving forward, we need to, we're, we're going to conduct classes in, in that facility, as well as meetings and other, other stuff. So there is the grant I'm going to apply for next year, and I'm going to put in additional stuff in there that we, that we need to save money.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's, you know, you don't, I don't think you have a director that, that's not a good steward of, of taxpayer dollars, so, we, if we can save money somewhere, we're going to try.
May I just say something to Sheriff real quick on that, just, you know, I know the, this isn't related to the furnishings, but just in general, from where I sit, this project has really saved a lot of money by utilizing Public Works and the Solid Waste Department, so I don't know how the public feels about it, but from my perspective, like, there's been a lot of cost savings on our lagoon and some other areas that I think are beneficial, and, and I think also there's some interest from other agencies now asking to use it, where a few years ago, we weren't sure if anyone else, if there was a need, there clearly is going to be a need from other people who want to work with us, so I, I kind of like this project personally.
Since you brought that up, and we've got a reporter here, Randy's article in the Hutch Tribune last week, covered a lot of that departmental work, working with each other that has saved substantial amounts of money. In, in the past, people have said, well, if we got too much help in that department, if they can do this, not necessarily in the case out here. Dirt had to be moved by the landfill. You can haul it that way and dump it, or you can haul it this way in the Sheriff's County's firing range. No extra personnel, no extra on the expense side. The fact that they're talking to each other, and working like a single company would under Reno County, these department heads, as Randy pointed out in his deal, have saved the taxpayers a whole lot of money, and it's that cooperation deal, and, and it's, it's worthy of comment. Things are higher in heck, no matter where you are, what, what you're doing, but there are ways to, to cut into that, and our guys are working that way, and, and I appreciate that, because I see it, because all the materials we read every week, a lot of the general public doesn't realize that. And I just want to thank you guys for cooperating, as, as Randy pointed out, Patrick.
I agree with that, and, and I know you guys are as shrivel as you, you possibly can be, it's not, not trying to get down on anybody today, but I just, yeah, I just, I'd like to see that process cross the board a little different, just so we know upfront, we don't have to ask questions like this.
Sure.
I know it makes it a little more difficult to do that, but, so.
I would completely agree with Commissioner Parks on this, that there's no reason why we can't add another item down at the bottom, you know, on even a design build, where you couldn't add the final needs, and, and include that in the total amount, so we know at the time, the maximum price that you would go put, like for furniture, or, you know, just like what Kyle was doing with regards to the appliances in the, in the new EMT building.
Prime examples that Sheriff left up there, it didn't go through the contractor, because as the Sheriff said, they, if it's on their end, they add their percentage, and, and at the time, Kyle said, well, I've already found something we think will work, if we add it there, we're going to pay more for it, but, just, just things like that, it's been done in the past.
Sure.
You know, so far, we've added a mower and a tractor, we've added furniture, well, now, have you figured the cost of getting water and sewer there?
Actually, that was done with Public Works, if it wasn't for Don and his crew, that, we wouldn't have water there by now. We tried to go down other avenues, but like I said, with the partnerships you guys pointed out, between Megan and, and Don, we wouldn't be where we're at today, and hopefully in about two months, a little over two months, it'll be open.
And so those are just things I'm pointing out, that, that, you know, I've anticipated, you probably, if you needed, would, would landscaping work, that it would be contracted out, so it'd be expensive rather than a, than a capital item, and, you know, it's part of the whole operating budget of the Sheriff's Department with regard to the, to the facility out there at the landfill, so those are things that I think maybe we'll watch a little closer as you come along.
Well, and, and not to get onto the furniture part of it, but we, you know, have you in a job that is, we require you to take care of a fairly large county for security and safety reasons, and so that being said, your force has to be trained properly, or we can get sued as a county if things happen, and if, if you watch any news that's going on in some of these other places, my heart goes out to you guys, because, you know, they're not treating them very much, with very much respect, and so that being said, I'm looking forward to the fact that you are going to utilize this for training, and get the ultimate amount out of each individual with the training that you can supply, and if other entities want to utilize it, and, and, you know, that's great, but I'm not going to vote yes or no for something, because I'm thinking somebody else might need it, I want you guys to have the best training and the best backing that we can give you, so, that being said, I don't want to waste money either, but I also want you guys to have the, you know, the capability of being trained to your ultimate level, so that's my, that's my two cents worth.
We've talked a while, so, in my short memory, I'd say it's time for a motion, we haven't had one on this subject yet, that's what I'm thinking. So unless you have something further, Sheriff, or these guys have something for you, I think it's time we give you an answer, yes or no?
Sorry we made you the poster child.
Hey, that's, that's all right, Sheriff. You know, I, and, you know, we, we actually helped co-host a SWAT school, that was all last week.
Yeah.
We utilized the armory for that, we'll be able to use this facility. Yesterday, today, and tomorrow, the Detective and Patrol Division put together a large-scale investigation exercise, just to identify some of the gaps that we may need to fill, or, or maybe we haven't covered. That's actually currently going on right now, out, out at that facility.
That's awesome.
So it's, appreciate your support, absolutely.
Well, thank you for your work.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Well, I'll entertain a motion, if somebody wants to make one.
I'd make the motion to accept the low bid of $41,814.86 for the furniture, for the training facility.
Do I hear a second anywhere?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
I would encourage you to, if you have opportunities to get some excess furniture that is not being used, or is being replaced from the county, that you opt on the app and drop off some of that other, that might be able to be replaced, just something to look at, okay?
Well, I, I did have that conversation with, with Kyle prior to, so, we just don't have that capacity or anything set around that we could use in that.
Good enough, as long as you checked it out, and made sure we're not missing something.
Sure.
Thanks, guys.
You know, we're going to have, it's not on this subject, but we're going to have some storage in the back of that Nelson Building, too, eventually, too, for some things, maybe not everything.
Well, it'll be full, like every building is.
Yeah.
We, we all have that, wherever we're at, in whatever business we're in. So we got a motion and a second, any further comments on this, then let's give, give the Sheriff a answer, Abigail.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, for showing up, uh, let me see, that's E, County Administrator Report.
All right, we have, Randy. Okay, have the, in the agenda-
Have the, in the agenda packet, there's monthly reports for Aging, Public Transit, the Appraiser, Communications Facilities, Health Department, Human Resources, Solid Waste, the Treasurer, and Youth Services. Anything in there that you have questions on, in their reports?
I don't remember when I was reading through there, anything that stood out. It looks like budget-wise, they're all pretty well in line for this time of year.
Okay. Next item is financial report, and this just kinda shows the funds, kinda high-level, revenues, expenses. General Fund revenues, we have received more than the budgeted amount so far this year. Again, that's good tax collections, sales tax, and other fees, interest that we received, so we're in good shape there. All the departments are pretty much in line where they should be. County Clerk shows that it's lower there, but if you look at the elections, part of the County Clerk, it shows they're over, and that's just because of how we have different payroll coded, but it's all, it evens out when you put the two divisions together. The overall for the General Fund, I don't know, going quick here, unless you have questions. The beginning fund balance, beginning of the year was 17 million. Right now, it's at 20 million. Again, revenues are over, but expenditures, we still have a good amount of expenditures. We won't get as much revenue for the rest of the year, but expenditures will continue on their normal path, and we still have some transfers, transfers to funds, I believe, General Fund to Aging is one example. We have, we may have some money from the General Fund to Youth Services still, and a couple other of those types that are budgeted, transfers. So, that cash balance will go down, the expenditures will get a lot closer to the budgeted amount by the end of the year, with revenues not changing much. So, I just kinda mentioned that. It looks like we have a very high balance, but that will go back down before the end of the year.
So, what do you expect coming into the year? Are we gonna be in good shape? Are we gonna have a shortfall again?
We should be in good shape.
Should be in good shape.
It depends how much transfers we have to do. I mean, at the end, as you saw earlier in the meeting, on some of the expenses, projects that you approved, we kept saying it's reserve fund, reserve fund. The only way we put money in is if we take it from the General Fund or some of these other funds and put it in that reserve fund. So, there will, there will be a decision made at the end of this year, before the close of the budget year, of moving some of the General Fund money over to these reserves for those one-ifs. So, that does take, does hit that cash balance, which then will impact the 27 budget, but we are in good shape right now.
Yep. I might make a suggestion here, has nothing to do really, if you don't mind, Randy. Some of these questions, you know, on transfers to CIP and some of those things, some of the other questions are, are things that, that they had breakout sessions for new commissioners at KAC that I think are very, very valuable. If you two fellows could go to that, I mean, it would help you a bunch. It helped me immensely to understand some of these things, and, you know, it's so much to catch up to and learn, but I, I would really, really encourage you to do that, because they go over a lot of these things in, in pretty good detail, and, and it really helped me. So, I'd just like to throw that in there, so...
And then, the other funds are also in really good shape right now. Aging, like I said, transfers from other funds, part of that's the General Fund, so you see their cash balance is down, but we haven't done the, the transfer yet. That'll take place within the next month, so that one will, their cash balance will end up better, but it comes from the General Fund. Public Health is in good condition also. Noxious Weeds is really good shape right now. Special Bridge, we're kinda building that up. We didn't have any, I don't believe we had any projects this year, so we kinda build that up, because when Don and his people do a project, when we have, we need to have the money, so that's why.
Well...
That one, we want that balance to keep going up, because when they come in, they're not cheap, projects.
Special, the special fund, what's that paid for, like storm damage, unexpected stuff?
The Special Bridge Fund, no, that's, so when there are bridge reconstructions, like Willowbrook, contracted bridges, not the ones that they do in-house.
Contract, not the ones you do now.
It's, yeah, the contract ones.
So, they keep that budget separate from what we do?
Yeah. And then, Road Bridge Fund, it's in good shape. There'll be more expenses, and again, this one will have a transfer into a reserve fund that's special for road and bridge. And then, Solid Waste is in good shape. Youth Services is okay. Again, they've only had half the transfer from the General Fund that we budget, we'll do the rest later, so they'll be in good shape also. Then the Post-Closure Fund for Solid Waste. Employee Benefits, this one's in decent shape. Again, this transfer out to other funds, that's the health insurance, so that's still going to have another pretty good transfer from the Employee Benefits Fund to the Self Insurance Fund, so that balance will also go down before the end of the year. Any questions on any of these? Some of these are the special funds, tech, mental health, for Horizons. We have to get more funds in to give them their full transfers. I mentioned that, I think, last time also. Special Parks is the one that you guys passed a policy earlier, that one's building up. Special Alcohol, that's for drug court, and then Bond and Interest.
Do you anticipate those funds coming in for the outside agencies that are budgeted? They've been a little shy, I'm just curi, curious whether...
On...
To finish out for the year, special funds to go to, like Tech and some of them?
Yeah.
Typically, I mean, this year, or does it look like it's gonna finish out?
I think it'll be close, but we still get motor vehicle money, taxes. I don't know if there's any other large property tax distributions that we'll get for this year. We might get one in December, I'm not sure if that hits December or January, but it's gonna be close. Special Equemen, Special Roads, and then CIP Fund. Any questions on any of these funds or the finances? All right, that's all I had, but then Patrick has...
I was just gonna real quickly use the opportunity to talk about the tax sale, which is going to be held next Thursday, October 30th. It'll be at Memorial Hall at 101 South Walnut Street, Hutchinson, like we always do. We try and keep the process the same every year, so that people are, know what to expect. Our doors for the tax sale will open at eight for registration. Well, it might, it's possible the door will be open. We're gonna start registering people at eight o'clock, so that we have bidders identified and all the good, all the numbers, and the process goes smoothly, and we will start auctioning properties at nine AM. Just a couple facts and figures. We began in January with 175 properties that had five years of unpaid taxes. We mail them all letters to the addresses we have, saying, "Hey, this is time to get serious about paying your taxes, or we're gonna do something about it." By May 6th, we still had 130 properties that hadn't paid their taxes, that were still on our list, so that's what we filed our case on. Today, as of last I checked, this morning, there were 76, oh wait, I'm sorry.
76 paid, so it went from 175 to 130.
Last year.
Yeah. Now, if they run out of that, it's gonna happen, so I'll, I'll, I'll talk faster.
Sorry. We started with 175. In May, we had 130, then we, after we filed the lawsuit and had civil process go one-on-one to talk to people about it, we had another 76 people paid, so today we're at 54. The 54 we have as of this morning includes four that went off this week, so we'll probably have a, we'll have a few that, between now and October 30th, will pay off. If anyone wants to consider bidding and wants to look at what's available, the list is on the county website under Legal Notices, where they can talk to White Oak Properties, the Realtor, and we have brought in $721,436.81 to date since this process began in January. So, I would not be able to do any of it without Jubilee Critchfield, who constantly answers the phone and talks to people and makes sure all this good stuff happens. If you guys have any questions, I just wanna make sure that we kinda update the public on it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'd say County Commission reports and comments. Richard, we'll start with you this week.
Well, I had a, I had a lunch yesterday with a, a bank employee who does, where you buy property and, you know, put in for, for money for the, that property or for housing and things like that. And we were talking about, you know, we always talk about, you know, needing more affordable housing, and we kinda discussed some of the, the needs of the public, but also, you know, what's available. And they were talking about, you know, he was actually visiting with me about, it's great to have new places being built, but there, it's been a number of years ago, but there used to be, you know, older folks like I'm becoming, that would, you know, wanna move out of their house, and a person would buy it and then put it on, you know, fix it up a little bit if they needed to, put it on the market for, you know, a house that's not a $200,000 house, or a $150,000 house. So, and we were just talking about, you know, maybe needing some more places where people that reach that age, where they're, they're done living in the house and doing the maintenance, and they wanna maybe live in a, a community where that is taken care of, have that be, you know, available, but also at a rent that is, is affordable, so that they can sell their property and then move on. So, we also talked about having skin in the game. It's really easy to wanna, you know, supply or get, you know, quote-unquote, free money, but that's really not free. Somebody's gotta pay for it. And so, if there's, you know, people out there that are looking for rent, you know, that is affordable, sometimes you can meet with a landlord, or, you know, that has a property that maybe needs a little bit of work, and you can have some skin in the game, and the rent then would be reduced. So, we're trying to figure out ways to encourage that. So, so that's something that, you know, I've had a few emails and a few calls, and, you know, I would love to have, you know, the most affordable housing in, in the country, but it's gonna take work from everybody. So, this was just one step in the process. I had a good lunch with this person, and, and we had, had a lot of conversation about what, you know, what could be moved from here on, so that's what I had from this week.
Ron, what do you have?
Well, I think tomorrow, most people know about it, but tomorrow, one of our people from Reno County, Hutchinson, is gonna be inducted into the Ag Hall of Fame, and that's Michael Hinton with Ag Trax here. It's a pretty, pretty big honor, because he's with Sonny Perdue and some of the others. Gonna be a survey coming out, you'll hear about it later on, but there'll be a survey coming out, and if you get one, takes 12, 15 minutes to fill out, but it's very important that we get that information back from the public, because we, we not only are doing things for today, but we wanna look in the future. And there've been some work put together with this survey. It's a little long, but, but we need, it's a lot of good information if we can just get back here from there. And so, please, if you get one, try to fill it out. And heard lots of great comments regarding Trails West Road, as well as, I've been over a lot of that road out in the southwest, and, and it's too bad the sheriff's here, but it's pretty hard to keep it under 55 on these good roads. And Thursday, last Thursday, the Ag Committee with the Chamber of Commerce towards Turon Feedlot, and on that way, I had a chance to stop by four, four of the small towns out in western Reno County to talk with the clerks and, and some other people. And it's, it's very impressive on what that feedlot does for our local economy, as far as how many million bushels of corn they take in, and, and tons of hay and silage, and the amount of people that work there, and the trucks that come in there. Jason told us that, that they provide enough beef protein during the course of the year in their feedlot to feed a million people for their needs, so that's a lot. And that's all I have.
Randy, what do you got?
I got a couple things. And this may be goofy, but I'm gonna throw it out there. I want the commission to have their own toy box, and I'm gonna challenge the rest of you. Can we do that, and set it here somewhere? Now, I'm gonna challenge Ms. Moore that's in the audience, and the rest of the, of our, our city boards that we have, you're gonna partner with us and fill that box up, and we're gonna beat everybody. If you guys are on board with that, let's go out and hit 'em up and see if we can, see if we can take the trophy.
The challenge dawned this year.
The challenge is on, so that's my challenge, and that might balance out the populace, where we could get some.
These, these two guys kinda got a pretty strong buzz, so...
I know, they do, and they got a lot of employees that...
You've traveled a long walk, but I, I'm behind you.
Okay, well, let's, let's hit up all our communities and see if we can get some toys in there this year. Even if we don't win, we'll have some extras in there, and you'll have the, the peace of mind that we helped somebody, but, you know, I don't, if you haven't been by the Nelson Building lately, I was going by there for a while in the morning at about seven o'clock or a little before, and I watched every morning now, they've been in there, the lights are on, and they're working, and so they got things framed up, they've expanded the bathrooms in the back, they got the bedrooms laying out, and so, kinda exciting to see that happen. But I brought this up, and I'm gonna bring this up this morning in a public, before you guys, the board here. I would like to do, I know we're gonna dedicate that and open that building when it's done, I would like to dedicate that building to the Nelsens. That spot has been occupied for probably 50 years at least with that, 40 with the Nelsens themselves, Wardington Appliance and Heating and Air, whatever was there before that, which was one of their relation. So, it's been a longstanding spot in that family, and I know we've, we've made dedications before, proclamations, that kinda stuff. I just wanna throw that out for, so you can think about it. I would love to dedicate it with a small plaque on the building, even though it's gonna say Reno County EMS, the small plaque could say something like the, the Nelson EMS Building or something, because it, it has been in our family a long time. I know that, that the two that put the pictures in the paper are doing some research right now to see if they can dig up some old pictures to showcase that when we're done with it. I want the pa, the public to celebrate in the EMS Building, but also to understand the longstanding history behind that, and I think that'd be a neat thing to do for the family, so I'd just be thinking about that, because it may have to have something we gotta talk about. I talked to Mr. Partington about that, and I just thought I'd bring that up this morning for the rest of you guys, so, anyway, that's all I got this morning.
Glad you brought up about the EMT building. Arlington's building's up, and they're working on it.
Yes. Well, I think the fire station's nearing completion, isn't it, one place as well?
Yeah, the Turon one, yeah.
The Turon one, yeah, that's what I thought, and I talked to him, and he said, "We're getting close."
Well, something has come up with me. They're gonna be honoring the volunteers here in Reno County here shortly, with the, Couple comments I'd just like to make. Quote from Matt Bogner. "You need to make a living for your family, for yourself and your family, but not everything you do should be for a dollar." Meaning, you volunteer some of your time to individuals who need it, charitable organizations, community. I think it's pretty obvious when you look around, most people do volunteer somewhere. And, you know, when we're born, well, end the quote back there, this is Don, but when we are born, we're issued so much time, none of us knows how much. It's the most precious gift we have, and when you choose to take a part of that most precious gift there is and share it for the benefit of others, you have given substantially. And... And just about everybody I know does that in some form or another. Sometimes it's with the job we choose, sometimes it's with other things, but I just wanted to make that statement and thank all volunteers publicly, and there are other ways we can do that, aren't there, Richard? So that's my little bit for today. And with that, if there's nothing else, I'd say it's time to adjourn this deal. Oh, don't get in a hurry to leave, guys. We've got a special, a study session, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Yeah, in between, we can, we can have our study session.